Good evening, everyone. Welcome council staff and residents that are joining us virtually. Joining me in the council chambers is the clerk, Mr. Defoe, Deputy Clerk, Mr. Bantock, our C A O, Ms. Thompson, and Director of Corporate Services, Ms. Kruger. If you could join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Madam Clark, the meeting is yours.
Through you, worship. Item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and as noted on the agenda, there are no minutes to be adopted at this session. The November fourteenth, twenty first, and twenty eight meeting minutes will be presented for consideration at the December twelfth council meeting.
Thank you.
Moving to item four, adoption of the addendum prior to today's regular council meeting, an addendum was circulated to include a delegation request, and there is a motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council dated November twenty eighth to add a delegation be added as printed.
Thank you, a mover. Thank you, Councilor Beck, second by Councilor McCabe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you.
Item five is report of the Committee of the Whole in Camera Session, and just prior to today's regular council meeting, a committee of the whole in camera session was held to consider the following item, and that was item three point one, collective bargaining update for I B E W six three six for parallel transit, and that was considered under the labor relations or employee negotiations exemption. And at the in-camera session, direction was given to the city's bargaining team.
Thank you.
Turning to your addendum, item six, hearings of deputations and presentations. There is a motion that the delegation by Mike Sullivan regarding a request to return to in-person meetings be heard.
Thank you, a mover for that. Thank you, Counselor Hunter, second by Counselor. I'm sorry, I missed a hand here, another. Thank you, Counselor McCabe, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried, and I'll look to Mr. Bantock, our deputy clerk, to bring Mr. Sullivan into the meeting.
Hi, Mr. Sullivan, can you hear us?
I can.
There you go, Mr.
And now you can see me.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, and thank you, your worship, and members of council, and congratulations to all of you on your hard-fought election wins. It was a pretty interesting race in Stratford. But my comments are about the use of in-person meetings. It's been a very, very long time since people could actually look at their counselors in person at a meeting, and first it was COVID, but now I understand it's the elevator. And I also have given to understand that no one knows when, when or if the elevator will be repaired. And so I believe it is incumbent upon you to find a way to allow in-person meetings to resume. The province has, has removed any COVID restrictions, though I would recommend, and I do go and go everywhere with a mask. But beyond that, people should be able to see you all and to allow themselves to be heard by you all in a way that's not quite so impersonal as this. There is no the Zoom meetings do not allow for the kind of intensity and passion that comes with in-person meeting. Indeed, it's very difficult to actually see whether counselors are paying attention when you're not present in the same room with them. Electronically visible meetings are a good thing. And I think this council and many others have learned a lot about how to run meetings by Zoom. I'm not suggesting that the Zoom be eliminated, but that it be used in some kind of hybrid mode whereby the counselors in are in the same room, the room be open to the public, and the room and the Zoom system could be used for delegations and presentations that cannot practically be done in person, and perhaps by individuals who cannot travel to the wherever the meetings are. One of the advantages of meeting in person is to be able to gauge the reaction of attendees, whether it be the mayor and counselors or staff and other members of the public. And for the example, the recent decision by the province to pass Bill twenty-three will give rise to many possible delegations. When council debates raising property taxes as a result of Bill twenty-three, I would like, as many others would be, to be in the room to suggest that the new tax, if it has to be imposed, be a surtax with the name the Doug Ford surtax in honor of Bill twenty-three. And then every time we get a tax bill from the City of Stratford, we're reminded of why our taxes have gone up. When council is forced to remove heritage designations because of a ministerial order under Bill twenty-three, I want to be in the room to let council know how I feel about losing heritage. When council discovers that its plan for attainable rental housing is derailed by the new definition in Bill twenty-three, which does not permit attainable rentals, I want to argue directly to council about how, how best to encourage attainability in the circumstances. When council discovers that it cannot affect, affect the exterior design of housing, I want to be in the room to ask you how we will prevent the uglification of Stratford, because that's what's coming. When council is faced with the possibility of increased water pollution as a result of the emasculation of the Conservation Authority, I want to be in the room to find out what that will cost me. When council finds another yet another budget shortfall as a result of the requirement to spend sixty percent of the reserves every year, I want to speak about what services or maintenance we will have to cut, and I want to do that in person. When the Energy and Environment Committee, of which I'm a member, recommends that we develop green building standards, and the province takes that right away in a hidden part of Bill twenty-three, I want to be in the room in person. There are some among council who would like to preserve farmland for farming, but as the City of Hamilton just discovered, the minister can order the expansion of the civic boundaries to encompass farmland and can order permission for buildings over thirty stories in their official plan. I think it will require in-person delegations, as there are many in this city who believe enough farmland has been paved over already. When we finally begin consultations on our official plan and come to a plan that is fair and balanced and starts to act on our greenhouse gas emission problems, and we then discover that the province can overrule that plan with retroactive effect, I want to be in the room to speak about what we should do to preserve it. To sum up, your worship and members of council, a lot was said during the election campaign about openness and transparency and engaging with the citizens of Stratford. You can start in that direction by holding meetings in person once again. And Bill twenty-three is a horrible, awful abuse of power. I hope you decide to take some action and let the province know what you think. Thank you very much for letting me speak, and I remain available for questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Thompson to give us a brief overview of, of the status of the elevator fleet, if I could, through our C A O.
Thank you, through you, your worship. As you are aware, the City Hall elevator is currently being updated. The scope of the work is to address the water damage to the existing equipment, including the new hydraulic pumps to be installed to replace the power unit, the controller, and to fix, to include the fixtures to improve the overall elevator operation to today's techno- technological standards. This includes modernization of the cabin, the including the sensors and the lockout features. Once this work is completed, the elevator then needs to be certified by the Technical Standards and Safety Authority before the elevator can be returned to operation, because the T S S A has jurisdiction on certifying elevators. At this time, staff are working with T S S A towards the certification of the elevator and to be able to return it to operation as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'll remind council, while most people listening, that this item will come up seven, three hundred and seventy. Okay, anything further at this time with regards to the delegation and the update? I'm getting some feedback. Is that feedback going your way as well? No, it is. Is, is there feedback coming your way? Is it bet better now? Thank you. All right. Having done that, we will move on back to you, Madam Clark.
Through your worship, item seven is orders of the day, and item seven point one is a resolution regarding the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six Deputy Mayor Appointment. And there is a recommended recommendation listed on your agenda, which is that a member of council be appointed as the Deputy Mayor for a two-year term to November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and that applications be accepted for two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six at that time, and that direction be given on the member of council to be appointed as Deputy Mayor until November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
And so what my thoughts are, that we split that item out or that recommendation out, and let's deal with the first part of that, which is that a member of council be appointed as the Deputy Mayor for a two-year term, November the fourteenth to November the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. A motion for that, Counselor Henderson, I see your hand, go ahead.
As you all are aware, I withdrew from running for Deputy Mayor, and I'd like to make a motion that Jody Burback be considered for Deputy Mayor for the two-year term.
So I, I will accept that motion and a seconder for that. So my, my comment to you, Counselor Henderson, would you be okay if we just dealt with the two-year term piece and then come to your motion with regards to who would be that person for the first two years?
Oh, certainly.
Thank you. So a seconder that we take the top piece of that motion, that it is a two-year term. Counselor McCabe, would you second that? You had your hand. Thank you. I see that. Discussion on that two-year term? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question with regards to the two-year term and that we would accept applications for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six at the end of that first two-year term. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and keep your hand up, please, so I can, I don't miss anybody, any of oppositions to that. I think that's unanimous. Thank you. And then Counselor Henderson, so that's, that's, that's carried. Counselor Henderson, I will turn back to you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that Jody Burack be considered as Deputy Mayor for the next two years.
Thank you, a seconder for that. Counselor McCabe seconds that. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just had a comment. I know this is, this is very different from the last time. I know this is in open session, but it's also last time the voting for the position was, was not public to all the other members of council as well. And I'm just sort of thinking on the spot here about the the problem that could pose. I don't know what the solution is, if it's that the people who are have their name for Deputy Mayor exit the meeting, or if it's that we should have, because I guess I'm just a little torn, because this is, it's not that it's a conflict of interest, but there is a pecuniary interest in a way, so I don't know. I'm just struggling with, with this a little bit, the open voting for the deputy position, because we are, we are, it's, it's quite a personal thing. We're actually voting for or against our colleague, and I, I turn to Mr. Defoe for input or direction on this item.
Thank you, Counselor Seven, and I'll turn the meeting back to Mr. Defoe on this item.
So through your worship, staff are unable to give direction on any pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. What I can note is it is common for members of council to, in this situation, to appoint a Deputy Mayor and to appoint themselves to advisory committees and local boards. Again, council is the deciding decision maker in this regard. But again, I, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that, or see if our chief administrative officer has anything further to add at this time.
I'll look to Ms. Thompson, anything to add?
Through you, your worship. No, I believe that the clerk has responded to the question, and I concur.
Counselor Seven, a follow-up?
Thank you, if I could. I, I guess what I should have asked, instead of saying all that, is that if I could ask Mr. Defoe if there would be an alternative to this process that we're taking right now, or, or if this is the only option for voting on this position.
Mr. Defoe.
Through you, your worship. So this is the standard process for voting on motions, especially at a council meeting. Again, I if you would like to defer and for staff to review alternative options, we could certainly take that back and review in the future, or again, pause this conversation and bring this back to a future meeting.
Counselor Seven, follow-up?
Thank you. I'm going to pause and see if anybody else has comments.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Hunter's hand, and then Counselors Henderson.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I, I agree with Counselor Seven that there's, it's, it's a little odd to be voting for a colleague and voting thereby voting against another colleague. And with a new council and in the interest of keeping relationships smooth as possible, I, I would prefer a closed vote as well, but I don't know if that's an option for us.
I'll turn to Counselor Henderson and, and then.
Well, like, the four, the last four terms that I've been on, we've always done like, well, if we were meeting in person, we wrote on a piece of paper, and then we're in Zoom, we just click the polling, and like, I was really leery about that, because I'm thinking, we, we got to work together for the next four years, and you don't want to feel like, like, this is a different type of voting, I feel. It's pretty personal. Like, this person's going to be our Deputy Mayor for, for say, two years, and then maybe somebody else will get in the last two years. And we all want to work together. We don't want to feel like oh, that person voted for me and that person didn't. I, I, I think it's very awkward. And I, I question whether other counselors do it this way, or I know there was, you know, we have to be careful because of the investigation. We're trying to be more.
What I'm going to, Counselor Henderson, what I'm going to suggest, and, and I will take this from is there's a lot of conversation here. I would entertain a referral back to staff to bring back what they think is a possibility, whether we stay with this or we can do something of, of a different fashion. Counselor Seven, I see your hand.
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion. I just want to comment that what I'm looking for is to keep this in open session, but somehow have the, what each of us place our vote as, not I see, I see Mr.
I see, I see the clerk's hand. Go ahead.
So through you, your worship, I just want to caution, there, there would no be, there would not be a closed voting option. The intent would be to review with our integrity commissioner whether there would be any pecuniary interest at that time. Again, the intent is that this would be voted on in open sessions. But again, we can refer back and then prepare a full summer report for this council so that you are comfortable with the procedure moving forward.
So that's been moved by Counselor Seven, a referral, a seconder. Counselor Burback, I see your hand. Are you going to second that? Go ahead on your comment.
Sure, I'll second it, and I guess my comment would be a question for the clerk. Have we, we haven't done it this way in the past, and it is uncomfortable, and I did reach out to you to ask about that earlier, and I'm just wondering if we know what the practice is for other municipalities? Is this, is this how they approach voting in the Deputy Mayor?
With, with regards to the referral, I, I want to caution that it is a referral motion in the discussion. We won't, you know, the discussion can't be at length and can't, it, it is a referral. So once we have a referral, and we do, we have it moved and seconded, then we have to be very cautious of, of what we are discussing with regards to the referral piece. And, and I'll look to the clerk if she confirms that concept as well.
So through your worship, yes, on our referral motion, there is no discussion. Once it has been moved and seconded and accepted by the mayor or the chair.
So I'm going to call the question, because we do have a motion on the floor with regards to referring our referral back to staff on this item. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and if you're opposed, keep your hand. One opposed, thank you, and that motion is carried. Thank you. Moving down to item, the next item, Madam Clark, and that's the resolution part.
So through your worship, item seven point two is a resolution regarding the two thousand and twenty-three Council Committee and Subcommittee Meeting Schedule, and there is a staff recommendation that the two thousand and twenty-three Council Committee and Subcommittee Meeting Schedule be approved, and that staff be directed to schedule the meetings accordingly.
A mover for such. Thank you, Counselor Burback, second by Counselor Briscoe. Thank you very much. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? None opposed, and that's carried. Thank you.
Through your worship, item seven point three is a resolution regarding the location of meetings consideration, and there is a staff recommendation that Council Committee Subcommittee and Advisory Committee meetings continue to be held electronically until the elevator at Stratford City Hall is repaired, following which meetings would return in person in council chambers located at Stratford City Hall or alternative locations as required.
Counselor B, I see your hand.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay, and a seconder for that? Counselor Henderson, are you moving that?
Yes, I am. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would second that, and the reason I would second that is because we've had a lot of people that have been able to watch it on Zoom that normally couldn't. There's still some that watch it on Rogers, but I think all the work that's involved in having staff to move all their stuff every time we have a meeting, say, to the roll recall blocks, and then we can't rent that room out. And, and I, I just, I feel this virtual, it's probably only going to be, what, another two or possibly three months, and it'll be fixed probably, that it's not worth all that expense and taken away, and and I really, I've wanted really the whole time, heard from two people that had a problem with it, and everybody else seems to love it. They think it's great. They can go back and watch it anytime, and they can see us, and they can log in. I think there was like, there's, there was fourteen people that were logged in here tonight to see it, so that's my reasonings.
Thank you.
And I think it's more accessible, actually, too.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. I see Counselor Seven's hand. And Counselor Briscoe.
Thank you. Can I just ask a follow-up to Ms. Thompson about, do we have any estimated timeline on the completion and the certification of the elevator at all, or is it, are we just waiting on the part, sort of?
I'll, I'll turn that over to C A O.
Thank you, through you, your worship, in response to Counselor Seven's question. I, I cannot give you a timeline on scheduling the certification, but that is the, the stage that we are at now. And as I said, we do need to wait for them to do the certification so that the elevator can be returned in to, in, to, to full operation. Certainly, we can bring back another report once we have a better timeline on that, but that is where we're at, at this point.
Counselor Briscoe, I saw your hand, and then Counselor Burback.
Thank you, your worship. I think I, I agree with the sentiments that Counselor Henderson put forward. I think the costs and the logistical barriers, we have to be good stewards of public funds, and so I think that there's concerns there, so I support the staff recommendation. However, I think it's clear from the deputation we heard today, and just in general, there's a desire to have in-person engagement as well, and we, as a, as a council, have to meet the citizens where they are. So if there is not necessarily a meeting setting, but if there is a way to create open forums where we are outing community regularly posted and communicated opportunities, I think, looking back to the deputation, again, we heard very thematic policy areas that the public is wanting consultation on, that if we can make ourselves as counselors available to say that we will have a housing open house where we give that opportunity to have an exchange of ideas. It may not, it won't be in a formal meeting setting, but I think looking at, at creating those kind of open engagement spaces as a, as to come alongside our virtual meetings would meet a, a need in the community and a concern.
Thank you, Counselor Briscoe, and Counselor Burback, B D, Wardofa, and Hunter.
Thank you, through the mayor. I kind of agree both with continuing with the, the virtual meetings, but also wanting to get to in-person. I think it's great, great for the public, but I also think it will be very good for council to be in the room together. It's, it's, I think it's really important that we don't sort of see each other as talking heads, but actually are able to interact. So I'm going to suggest a possible amendment to the motion, and that would be possibly to put a, a timeframe on whenever we, we're going to do this for another, say, two months. And if at that point the elevator is not repaired, that we would move to some form of in-person meeting. So perhaps we could pick a date like January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So I would put that forward as an amendment.
So, so thank you, and, and if I may wordsmith that a wee bit, Counselor Burback, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Thank you. So my thoughts, and, and, and I'll, I'll read kind of what I've cobbled together and your thoughts in there, that, that if the elevator is not operational by the end of January twenty twenty-three, that the city clerk be, be directed to prepare a report for the consideration at the second regular council meeting in January and, and, and options available in holding in-person meetings off-site. So that gives some direction, and we would revisit it by the second regular council meeting in January, and then giving our clerk some time to prepare something for the end of January. Is that suitable? Okay, and a seconder for that, and then I'm going to come back to Counselor B D. Counselor McCabe will second that, and then I will carry on. Counselor B D, you had a comment to make, Wardofa and Hunter.
Thank you. So reiterating a few comments. As much as our citizens wish to see us in person, I think, as Counselor Burback shared, we want to be seen back in person. It goes without saying. However, I, I don't know if it's if we're in a place that staff, they, they've been working as the best that they can with the services that we have for getting this all there fixed. As we all know, time and material, it's, it's tough to get these things done. I don't know if, you know, putting a deadline of January makes it any better. The job's going to get done as quickly as it can. We know that we want it done. It's not like we're putting any roadblocks in the way of getting this project finished. And I believe that getting this to the point where we are back in person will happen, and hopefully it will be in the early months of twenty twenty-three. But as the staff recommend, then, recommendation indicated the costs to, to do so just is prohibitive. So I think whether it's, you know, January or February, it makes no difference. We're going to get into council chambers as soon as we can. So I think it's, it's just doing another report that we don't require. We know what the staff recommendation is, and we should just proceed as that.
Thank you, Counselor B D. I have Counselor Wardofa and then Hunter. Unmute, unmute yourself there, Counselor Wardofa.
Yeah, my advice, thank you, your worship. I'm really, really, we appreciate it. First, we are, the army question or my, for all of you guys advise for me, for you guys, we have to be in person. We have one of the best building, historical building. Most of people coming to see us, to talk to us. That's, you know, my advice. I know you guys, you're struggling to fix this computer, this lift. And we have to fix in as soon as possible, if possible, of course. Most of people, they have no computer access or internet access, right? And then we are meeting. I, I'm working with the community every single day in the coffee shop. Here's the many, the main question they're asking, when the lift is working? You know, this is very, very important, and then I, I just get a lot of comments. And then, you know, if, 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 if any issue or many issue, if you find out solution or those meanings, but I know this is hard or if difficult, we have to find somewhere, we gathering or in Versiwaterlo or lottery complex. That's my. or in Versiwaterlo or Rotary Complex. That's my idea. Thanks so much, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Wardolfo. Counselor Hunter.
Thank you, worship. I agree that the cost proposed for these meetings is quite pricey, but there's a value in meeting in person. Some of that, as the delegation pointed out, some of the things you don't get on Zoom meetings that you can get in an in-person meeting. I don't know if, like, I, I do have concern going forward about an old building that has a single elevator for access, and if we're dependent on that elevator always working to be able to hold in-person meetings, I, I just think it would be nice to have an alternative. I don't know if it's possible. I did send a late question late this afternoon to see if it's possible that we have a, a, a permanent secondary meeting space so that some of the cost of moving, for example, to the Rotary Center, if we picked a room that was the best room, whether some of the wiring costs, some of the moving costs could be balanced out by having a permanent alternate site. And, and perhaps there's value in that. Additionally, on the rental income side, I don't know if some of those facilities would improve rental income for us by having a better connected, more modern meeting space. And, and this is a question, whether it would have value. And I, I don't, I'm, I'm guessing that staff haven't had enough time to look into that, but I, I, I would like to see that. I would like to, to be in person as quickly as possible. And having, oh, my apologies, go ahead.
With, with, to that end, can we leave that piece till a little later on, perhaps under new business? And then perhaps we can, we can address that with a referral piece. But let's stay with the, the amendment that's on the floor, and I believe, who do I have next? I'm sorry, I saw Counselor Bean's hand.
Maybe it's been addressed with past council, but is there a way to do a hybrid version where you meet at City Hall, but you also are on Zoom for people who cannot make it?
And I'll, I'll go to the clerk for that clarification. Mr. Fo.
That's a three-year worship. So the main issue is that council chambers is not accessible to all citizens. So anyone with a disability would not be able to make it up here. So the intent was to maintain a virtual meeting or move to an in-person meeting at a site that was fully accessible so that you're not limiting attendance to certain members of the public. But the intent in the future, once we return to in-person meetings in council chambers, would be to review and implement a hybrid option as we do have the infrastructure here to live stream meetings as well as have in-person participation.
Thank you, Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just had a question from Ms. Thompson, and then I was going to seek clarification on the motion, and I was just going to make a comment if that would be all right with the mayor.
Go ahead.
So for Ms. Thompson, I'm just wondering, just for some background on how long we have been, or when we first were looking to get that part for the elevator and how sort of long it has been going on, has that been quite a while at this point, or?
Thank you, Counselor Seven. I'll, I'll turn it over to the C A O.
Through your worship, in response to the question, so it was in January of this year that the City Hall experienced the flood, which took out the elevator as well as the two newer boilers that have been installed here. We have been, we issued an RFP for the proposed work. It is extensive work that needs to be done. As I said, it included new hydraulic pumps to be installed to replace the existing equipment, the power unit, the controllers, new fixtures. We, we also included what we call the modernization. There had been issues with the elevator in the past, and so we've included the modernization to the cabin to, including the, the sensors and the lockout features. There have been, as you know, supply chain issues. We, those have been identified, and that has been, has taken a while to, to work through. We appreciate the work of the company that we retained to do the work to try and obtain the, the, all the equipment and the, the features that were needed. As I said, we are at the stage now where it's a certification now that by the T S S A is the final step before the elevator can be returned to full operational status. And that's where we are at, at this point. I'm sorry, I cannot give you a date as to when the T S A will be able to do that certification, and that's what staff continue to monitor with both our, both our contractor and T S S A.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Seven.
If I could just have clarification on the amendment, and then I just had a comment.
Okay, so what I will do is, is if, if the clerk did, was able to, to gather that amendment as I, I, I presented, I'm just wondering if you could read that back to Counselor Seven and the rest of council. Thank you.
So through your worship, it is my understanding that the amendment that is on the floor is if the elevator is not repaired by the end of January twenty twenty-three, that the city clerk be directed to prepare a report for the second regular council meeting to be held in January, outlining the options available for holding an in-person meeting offsite. Again, this would just be another opportunity to reconsider the holding of an in-person meeting offsite. But I would look to Counselor Burbak, just to ensure that I've captured the intent along with Mayor Ritzma to capture your further refinement.
Yes, that's correct, as far as I'm concerned. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Burbak. Anything further? Counselor Henderson.
I just wanted to mention too, to remind people that, you know, there think is around ten to fifteen percent of the population in Strawford don't have computers, but there is computer access at the library for anybody that wants to watch a meeting. Or you can watch it on Rogers, and you can also watch it if you have a computer on Rogers, on the computer, you just go onto Rogers' website and type in Stratford City Council, and it'll pop up and you can watch it there. So there's lots of other ways to see it. And we've actually had a larger turnout of people that are actually watching city council. I mean, sometimes it's like when you're looking at the views, two or three hundred people were, you know, it's the same as, my church is the same way. We kept the Zoom up because a lot of people that are at home or other people from other churches can watch it, right? So I think it's, it's definitely a desire to get meeting together in, but another thing for the new councils that is another reason is I think of staff too, because they, when, when we start meeting in person, you'll see they bring like this tray that's loaded with like three shelves of paperwork up, and you know, all the other stuff, and then sometimes they have to run out photocopy things or look something up on their computer for us because we've asked them a question and they run out and look, do that. And so that makes it very hard for them to be able to do that. If say we were at the World Recomplex, loading all that in, taking it over there, then they'd have to load it all back, bring it back to City Hall. And you know, sometimes our council meetings go to eleven o'clock at night, so that's another aspect that's sort of a, an issue too, right? I mean, it's a strong issue in my mind.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Anything further, and I know we'll come back to Counselor Hunter, your comments a little later in the meeting, if, if you will, and, but any other comments on the amendment as presented? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed, if any? See one opposed, and that's carried. So I'm going to go back to our, our clerk, and I believe we have had a mover of the original motion, correct? A mover and a second, Counselor. I mean, I was looking at Counselor Beatty's name on the. Go ahead.
Through your worship, yes. So as the motion has now been amended, you will be calling the question on the motion as amended.
Yes. So I'm going to call that question if there's no further discussion. And that's the, the count, the staff recommendation that has been amended. All in favor? Opposed, if any? Counselor Wardolfo, did you vote in favor or?
I'm not, it's a little bit, I'm not agree with that. My question is not only for council or maybe for the, our meeting, what about people who work in there? Lots of people working, the, the staff. It's very hard to walk upstairs. I've been many times that building. Not only for, the, the staff also struggling.
Okay.
We have to know this very seriously, your worship. I, I know it is hard for everybody, but we have to think for our employee who work in there. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So I have called the question, and I, I'm not sure if the hand was up to ignore, to acknowledge you're in support or not, but that was carried. Thank you very much. That ends, clerk. Back to you.
Through your worship, item seven point four is a resolution regarding the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six appointments to subcommittees and standing committees. And there is a recommendation on the agenda that Mayor Ritzma be appointed as an ex officio member to each of the five subcommittees, that the following members, as noted on your agenda, be appointed to the subcommittees in the roles noted, and that all members of Stratford City Council be appointed to the five respective standing committees.
Questions, comments, or a motion? Counselor Seven, will you move that?
Yes, and I have a comment after.
Thank you. A second for that. Thank you, Counselor Hunter. Go ahead, Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just had a question for, for members of public and, and myself, just some clarity around the, the mayor, Mayor Ritzma being added as an ex officio member around if that is standard practice and the reasoning behind that, just for people watching, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll turn that back to the clerk.
So through your worship, yes, it is standard practice for the mayor to be appointed as an ex officio member to our subcommittee, subcommittees with respect to including in the motion. It's always added into the bylaw, and we just wanted to clarify that the mayor is appointed as an ex officio member.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Through your worship, item seven point five is a resolution regarding review of council-appointed representatives to the Destination Stratford Board of Directors. And there is a staff recommendation that the correspondence from Destination Stratford dated August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two be received, and that direction be given on the recommendation by the Destination Stratford Board of Directors, requesting to reduce the number of a council-appointed representatives to the board from two to one.
So some direction from council with regards to receiving the information and also the moving the appointment from council from two to one. Is there a recommendation, Counselor Seven?
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to move that council receive the correspondence and that option one, maintain the status quo be, be moved. And my reasoning is that I do see the justification here, but I, my thoughts are that the timing, given the upcoming implementation of the municipal, municipal accommodation tax, I just feel like it would be beneficial to have two members, so that's, that's the option that I'll move, and I'll see what.
A second for that motion? Counselor Burbak, you're seconding that. Thank you. Further discussion? So the, the direction is to, to receive and then to maintain two council representatives on the board for Destination Stratford. Counselor Henderson.
I would just want to comment that we got a letter from Destination Stratford outlining the reasonings that they felt they only needed one, so I'm, I'll be voting against this motion.
Any other discussion before I call the question? Counselor Briscoe, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. In conversation, to get clarity on this with Destination Stratford, they, this measure was initially put in due to financial concerns that happened prior, that they had previously been running a deficit, so two were put on as kind of an advisory overseeing measure that has been rectified and continue on quite strongly. So my concern that I brought up was not to create a siloing. I think we see that a lot in our policy structures here. It's just transportation, or it's just art surge, just, so my concern with going down to one was that we would lose some of that, but they voiced that they have strong communication plan in place that it's additional oversight that they're not gaining a lot out of. So if we do move forward with two, it'd be important to move forward in a really constructive way that the individuals that are on that, on taking that, those two seats, one obviously have a background in it, but I think too, that the second person then has no background in it, so we're getting fresh perspectives in there, and it's actually an advantageous piece, and we're not overburdening with bureaucracy if we are sticking with the two.
Thank you. Further comments? There is a motion on the floor. I will call the question. All in favor? Please keep your hand so I can. Opposed, if any? And that has been defeated, so I'm looking for further direction? Further motion? Counselor Hunter, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would move to accept the, the recommendation from Destination Stratford that we reduce our representation to one member.
Thank you. So we'll receive the report and reduce to one. Thank you. A second for that. I see Counselor Beatty's hand. Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Niger? Comment that you were going to second. I apologize. Anything with regards, any discussion with regards to the motion on the floor, the current motion on the floor? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor, and please keep your hand up? Opposed, if any? And one opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Adam, clerk.
Through you, your worship, item seven point six is a resolution regarding the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six council appointments to advisory committees and local boards. And there is a recommendation that members of Stratford City Council be appointed to the advisory committees and local boards as outlined in the attachment to report C O U twenty twenty, twenty-two dash zero nine five titled Recommended Council Appointments to Advisory Committee and Local Boards.
If, if I may, before we move forward with this, there, there has been one request, and, and Counselor Henderson has requested to step away from the Stratford Perth Museum appointment, and Counselor McCabe has accepted to step into that spot. If I could have a mover to accept that amendment, Counselor Briscoe, thank you, and Counselor Niger will second. Discussion on that. Thank you. I will call the question on that amendment. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. And so then what I'm looking for is a mover for the motion as amended. A mover for such. Thank you, Counselor Hunter, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. Seeing none. Counselor Henderson, thank you. Go ahead.
So I had just one, I just want to double check. In previous years, I've sat as the mayor's rep on the community in Bloom, and how we worked it is that I attended the meetings and he did the traveling. I don't know if we want to continue that or just leave it as having one on there.
And we can, we can talk to that, that piece as we move forward, Counselor Henderson. Okay.
When do you mean?
You, you're talking about some, you need somebody, or you mean there was two and some, the other person did the traveling?
See, Community in Bloom was always a council member and the mayor.
Yeah.
And so in the previous, the last four terms, what we've done is I sat in for the mayor as an ex official on the Community in Bloom meeting, but when it came to the traveling time, then the mayor went and did that.
And we can.
To do that, so.
And we can certainly carry that, that forward.
Well, we need a motion for that at this meeting.
I do not believe so. I'm looking at the clerk. Go ahead.
So through your worship, so currently as outlined in the appointments, only Counselor Beatty would be appointed to the communities in Bloom, and then yourself, Mayor Ritzma, would be appointed as an ex officio member. The thought was to leave it as one member currently. There is a future report coming forward about the composition of the Communities in Bloom Advisory Committee, and at that point, seek some further direction if that is agreeable to this council and to you, Mayor Ritzma.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Thank you, Mr. Fo. Any other questions with regards to the amended motion? Any other questions with regards to the amended motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and I believe that's unanimous. Thank you.
So through your worship, item eight is business, which previous notice has been given and there was none scheduled. Item nine was reports of the standing committees and there were no reports to be considered at this meeting. Um, item ten is notice and intent and there's none scheduled. So moving to item eleven, reading of the bylaws. As outlined on the agenda, there were two bylaws listed. Uh, given the consideration related to the appointment of a deputy mayor, I am recommending that be deferred until this matter comes back, which would leave one by law being the appointment of council members to subcommittee, standing committees and advisory committees, boards and agents, agencies. Um, however, there would be the reflected amendments that we just approved privacy, uh, previously.
So a motion for the first and, uh, second reading, Counselor Henderson, you're moving second by Counselor Burbak. Thank you. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. And then the third and final mover for such, Counselor Seven and Counselor BD. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor? And that's unanimous.
Through your worship, item twelve is consent agenda and there's no consent agenda to be considered. It's moving to item thirteen, new business. Are there any new business items?
If, if I may, I'll, I'll start, uh, a, I wanna offer up a congratulations to our, um, Director of Infrastructure and Development Services, uh, uh, Director Crinklaw has been named for a second term to the Municipal Engineers Association of Ontario. And a big congratulations for the job he does in the city and also, uh, being actively involved beyond our CD limits. So congratulations, uh, Mr. Crinklaw. Yes, thank you. And then I'm going to move on. Are there other items? Uh, Counselor Hunter, I know earlier you had, uh, addressed something. Do you wanna bring that item forward?
Uh, thank you, worship. The, um, my, my question was around whether there's an opportunity to, uh, extract more value from a, a secondary meeting site so that we could get to in-person meetings as quickly as possible. Uh, but potentially, I don't know if some of the costs associated with this move are ones where we can leave equipment in place, uh, or whether they're just money gone once, once we have the meeting. And, and additionally, whether there, whether there's, there's an opportunity to extract a higher rental, uh, from having a, a room with that equipment in it.
So my thoughts on, on that item, uh, Counselor Hunter, that if we refer it back to staff to see what the cost would be, what kind of skill sets are required for that type of work and the return of, on the investment. And then they can, uh, bring a report back. Would that be suitable to you?
That, that works for me.
Okay, so you'll move, uh, referral to staff, a second for that. Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of that referral? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Other items under new business. Counselor Burbak, you see your hand. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you through the mayor. Um, I just wanted to mention, um, Bill, uh, twenty-three, which is a provincial bill. Uh, I can't remember what they called it, but it's, uh, it's affecting the way that, um, housing developments will happen in this province. Uh, I know it received royal assent today. And I've had a number of people, um, ask me about the city's response to Bill twenty-three. And as our staff has been working on a response, uh, to the bill because it will, it will really affect, uh, our municipality and all municipalities as we move forward, uh, with planning and development, uh, with working with conservation authorities. Um, there, there are a lot of impacts. So, um, I just would, through the mayor, like to ask, um, Ms. Thompson, if she could fill us in on, on a little bit about what the, the city has done thus far, uh, in response to Bill twenty-three.
Thank you, Counselor Burbak. And just before I hand it over to Counselor, uh, to, uh, the clerk, the C A O, uh, just two items that I, 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 I will be doing. Uh, first and foremost, a letter will be sent to the premier and, and to ministers with regards to our concerns around, uh, Bill twenty-three. And, uh, on Wednesday, I will be, uh, in Toronto and will have, uh, the, the opportunity to speak to ministers about our, our, our concerns around Bill twenty-three and the impact in our community and our residents. Uh, so at that, this point, then I will turn it over to Ms. Thompson for further comment.
Thank you through your worship. Um, yes, staff have been reviewing, um, the, the draft bill when it first came out, uh, along with, I'm sure, all other municipalities in the province of Ontario in what I will call municipal-related agencies. Um, there has been a lot of, um, um, work done to review the, um, the impact and the implications. And depending on how Bill twenty-three is, um, implemented and the timeframes, um, it appears that there will be impact on municipalities, especially around areas of development charges. Constructing a more affordable housing, um, the environmental concerns, um, as well as impact on either, uh, the, the tax levy moving forward to make up the difference in the loss of development charges or council may need to, um, make some determinations on the service levels in order to, um, uh, implement the, the measures of Bill twenty-three. So we have put together, um, uh, a number of documents that have been prepared by municipal-related associations and agencies, uh, for council as well as a, a covering memo that went out. Um, I will say that A M O, which is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, um, is an organization that represents, uh, its member municipalities in advocating and working with the government, um, to raise our concerns, our shared concerns, um, how, how we can assist, how we can provide feedback. Um, A M O, um, has been producing a number of, um, uh, discussion papers and keeping its members informed with releases and that information is available on their website. Um, it is my understanding that a number of submissions were presented, uh, to the provinces during the consultation period that, um, mainly ended on, uh, November the twenty-fourth. It is my understanding that A M O was not permitted to make formal presentations as part of that process. However, they continue to advocate and advocate well on our behalf of the, the concerns. Um, in trying to finalize all of this today, um, we, we then learned just shortly after one o'clock today that Bill twenty-three had been, had received royal assent, uh, through the province. That doesn't change our position, um, doesn't change the fact that we would like to continue to advocate and work through A M O and our other related agencies with respect to the concerns. We share the same concerns as the province in wanting to have, uh, more affordable housing and as quickly as possible uh, for the benefit of our, our residents. And so we will be advocating with the premier and the ministers, um, so that we can advance our common goals with the province. But asking for more consultation on some of the definitions, some of the timelines and some of the regulations. We don't have those details and those details are critical for us to be able to really zero in on the direct implications, um, of Bill twenty-three on the city of Stratford. So we will be continuing the work, um, to find out and to provide our submissions, um, with respect to those definitions. As you know, Stratford already has, um, a definition of affordable housing. Um, we have been using that on our, uh, community house, so our house, affordable housing project that is currently underway. And we have, as staff have had to have a discussion, um, about the impacts of Bill twenty-three on that current housing project, uh, that is, is underway. Um, so this is a, a long answer to come back and say that we will be providing you with more information. But that is the, uh, amount of work that we have been doing, uh, to date. Um, and as I said, consulting with our partners, uh, we do not have the resources to do this level of, uh, analysis. Uh, but as I said, the, we have been working with our, our partners, um, and we share those similar concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that, um, thorough explanation and, and, and an update of where we're going, going forward. Certainly, we, we have challenged, been challenged with when the bill was presented. Basically during an election campaign, we weren't in a spot where we could, uh, you know, we were limited in our, in our response to the bill. So we will continue to do so, you know, even though it has received royal assent. So thank you for bringing that forward, Counselor Burbak. Appreciate it. Any other items under new business? Seeing none, Adam clerk.
Through you worship, um, item fourteen is adjournment to standing committees, but there are no standing competing, committee meeting scheduled. I will note the next regular council meeting is scheduled for December twelfth. Uh, and the final item listed for consideration is item fifteen, confirmatory bylaw. It requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Thank you. A mover for first and second. Thank you, Counselor Bean, second by Counselor Hunter. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. And third and final? Thank you, Counselor BD and Counselor Seven. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. And the final item and, and certainly thank you for this of being our first of, of many, uh, council meetings, I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Burbak and Counselor McCabe. I see your hand as well. All in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.